We're good. Ready to go?
Yep, all good.
So guys, okay. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 20th, 2022 Meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. We are virtual tonight. We had anticipated being live for the April meeting, but due to public policy from the governor's office, we are going to be virtual this meeting and potentially next month as well. Apparently, those decisions are coming on a month-by-month basis by the governor. We will have our public hearings tonight, and if you so choose to comment on them, you have the opportunity tonight, or you can submit written comments to the Planning Board Executive Secretary, who I believe now will be Jeff Frisch. Jeff, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and you can send those to jeff@townhall. Okay, so tonight is, of course, again, another Zoom meeting, and everybody will have an opportunity, once the applicants and their representatives have spoken, the board will ask some questions and then give the public an opportunity to ask questions or comment on an application. Okay, so calling the meeting to order, I would ask the secretary to please call the roll tonight.
Altman?
Yeah.
Price?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Bev Kaxtiner?
Here.
And then Soski and Ford are not present.
All right, thank you. All right, so what we do first is we go into an agenda review with our Planning Board attorney and staff, and then we will commence the public meeting. So let's, Jeff?
Yep, the first one is 2PO122. They were here last month. There were some concerns about noise and other things by the local community. They sent a letter into that tried to address those, which you all received, and that's kind of remained concern with them. We have some questions about sales versus versus service, because they have also a concern in the information that you receive. 3PO122 is for 1925.
Jeff, Jeff, could I just interject here for a moment on the Planning Board report? And I just want to point out to our members and for the public as well that, for this matter and a number of the other matters, you'll see that for conditional uses in the Planning Board report, there are suggested findings for those conditional use determinations, which is something new that we're doing at the staff level to assist the board in making all of the code findings that are required for making a decision. And so the motions, when we do get to them, if the board chooses to approve a conditional use permit application will include adoption of the findings as well as a determination on the application subject to conditions. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Ken. The next, so the next one will be 3PO122, which is 1925 South Clinton. They were also in last month. We had some, some questions and concerns about what's going to be constructed as part of the space, and we've talked about the the dirt piles and other things located on the property and how they will be, what the timing will be for them to be removed. They also made some slight revisions to the building footprint, which has been, has been submitted and we sent out to the board as well. The next one is 3PO222, which is for a conditional use permit for a sushi restaurant. There's a few questions asked, but there's no major concerns for that one. 4PO122 is a conditional use permit for pure precision moving. East Henry Road, again, there's a few questions asked, but they've answered most of the information that we need from them. 4PO22 was the epic for initially, forget for Jenny's Bakery. They're doing outdoor, outdoor dining outside of the restaurant that they have there. I think my main question for them is if there's room around the seating for people to access and use the sidewalk without, without any impedance for that. So that's kind of my main question for them. Application 4PO322 is for U of R first final site plan approval, conditional use permit, and finally, E-PAD approval. As we've seen them a lot, and the main, the main, we have a few questions, and the main concern is about the finalization of the the conservation easement, which we are currently working on, and it's drafting up language and it needs final approval by the attorney and then our attorney, their attorney, and eventually going through the town board.
And on that, if I could just interject, Jeff, I do believe that legal staff, the University of Rochester, and I have come to an agreement on what the language of the conservation easement should look like. There is some work to still be done to incorporate meets and bounds description in the mapping, which is going to be incorporated and integrated into that conservation easement. They did send us an update on that even today, and I expect that that will be completed very, very soon. And I believe that the staff recommendation on this is that we're comfortable allowing this matter to go forward subject to further approval by me. And really, that's going to be further approval by Everett Garcia, who's our town engineer to review the meets and bounds description and make sure that all maps close. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. And Everett also has, he has some comments for and some questions that he's going to need answered, but he didn't think it was anything that would, would, could hold could hold of approval and was something we could handle afterwards before the issuance of a building permit. 10PMB121 was postponed by the applicant. That's the, under public hearings, 3PO422 was the application for the conditional use permit for Jersey Mike's, and that one that we tabled, just because we wanted to update our language and make sure that we have findings for conditional use permits going forward.
Very much, very much like what we're doing with all of the other conditional use permits. We hadn't been doing that in the past, and so with the Jersey Mike's application and the, all the other conditional use applications that we have on tonight's agenda and going forward, we're, we're going to be providing to you, the board, those proposed findings.
Yeah, so we drafted, we drafted the findings for this one as, as well as the other ones and sent those out for your view.
All right, Jeff and Ken, going back to the U of R application, I think I heard that the town board was going to be involved, is that in accepting the conservation easement?
Correct, yeah. So the conservation easement itself runs to the town of Brighton, and the planning board doesn't have authority to accept the conservation easement on behalf of the entire town, only the town board has that authority. And the way that the conservation easement is drafted, the town board approves the conservation easement. It would be up to the town board in the future if the U of R wanted to try to modify or even extinguish the conservation easement to go to the town board. But the language of the conservation easement also requires that the planning board be involved in that process and have some oversight relative to whatever modifications might come in the future.
All right, thanks. All right. Trying to get back on track here, we will review and approve the meeting minutes from our February 16th meeting and our March 16th meetings in May, on May 18th. So at this point, we will commence the public hearings.
I just want to jump in and say that the public hearing was properly advertised by the planning board in the Daily Record of April 14, 2022.
That was going to be my question. Thank you. All right. Our first application is 2PO122, application of Cortez Properties owner and Cortez Cycle Sales agent for a conditional use permit approval. This is for property at 2771 West Henrietta Road. Is there Mr. Cortez here?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good, thanks. Okay, just would ask, we did get your letter and just wanted to ask if you wouldn't mind just kind of hitting the highlights of the, of the letter, and I think you must have gotten the tabling resolution and seen some of the conditions there. Would kindly just address any modifications or clarifications that you've got?
Well, after the last meeting, it sounded like the noise issue was a much larger problem than I had realized, so you know, shame on me for that. So the message that I got was, I, and from the letter that you guys sent, it sounded like you wanted to have some, some type of resolution where we're containing the noise, reducing the noise. And then also the issue with us driving up and down and test driving the bikes on center drive. So that was very clear after the meeting that, you know, you guys weren't really liking that, or the neighbors weren't really liking that. So I just went back to my general manager and the technicians. I reviewed, you know, basically how the meeting went, what your concerns were, and they immediately, you know, they, they didn't realize it either, I guess. So we basically just said, listen, we're not here to ruin the neighbor's quality of life. I don't want to be in bad graces with the town. We need the ability to use this other building for storage and selling and stuff like that. So the big thing we're going to do is we're no longer going to test drive, and we have already stopped, but we're no longer using center drive to test drive bikes. I think, I, I think that was the biggest concern, correct me if I'm wrong, from the first meeting that we had last month. Also, I told them anytime they're working on a motorcycle, no matter what time of year it is, to make sure the garage door is shut when the engine is running and to, and to run the engine for the minimum amount of time needed to diagnose the problem. So they were pretty understanding. I said, listen, this is the way it's going to have to go. We're not going to, you know, we have to find a way to control this a little bit, because some of the bikes, you know, can get a little loud. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to make sure that when we're working on a bike, no matter what time of the year it is, if it's inside the building, we'll shut the doors. Well, we're not going to go out of our way to rev the engine any higher than we need to, to get, you know, to accomplish what we need to do. We're, they're, they've already stopped driving down Center Road. Now, there is a guy that lives down Center Road that owns a bike. It's fairly loud. He's going to be driving it up and down there this summer, so I, I can't, I don't want to be held responsible for any motorcycle that goes up and down there, but you have my word that Cortez Cycle Sales is not going to be promoting the use of that road. We're not going to be using it for our purposes. And we're going to go out of our way to reduce whatever noise we would make working on a motorcycle. I don't know. I, I think that's pretty much what, what you guys wanted. Again, as I alluded to in the bottom paragraph there, that the motorcycle service is what we do to prep the bike so that we can sell it. And then it's just a service we offer our customer to repair the bike if needed. So I don't even, I'm not, it's not a profitable portion of my business. It's just a necessity. So the last thing I, I'm going to try to do is have eight technicians working on more motorcycles. So it's really, like I stated, you know, the main use of that building is going to be for stored and some service bikes. And, you know, the large portion is going to be extra display so that I can display and sell more bikes.
Okay. I, I do believe that was the other part of this is really, excuse me, clarifying that, you know, the number of employees that you might have over in the new building or your other building, and, you know, whether this was all going to end up being a lot of service going on in two different buildings.
What, what happened was, I, I don't know if I mentioned this in the first meeting, when I, when I spoke to Rick Stefano before I applied for the use of the other building, he's, he, his verbiage to me was, is you're going to, you have to get the same type of permit. It's, it's got to have the same use like your first building. So all I did was, is I copied what the use of the first building was. Well, you know, on the original one, I sent it over to you, where it led to how many employees I'm going to have and all that other stuff. I just mimicked what I used for the first building, because I thought that's what you wanted to see. That really isn't the case. I haven't added an employee. So, and I, and we're probably not going to add an employee. It's, 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 like I said before, it's, it's just, we need more selling space, and when you just, we just need more room to have these bikes be able to be out of the way, but not, you know, enclosed and not having a wheel in and out every night and every day.
All right.
We're going to absolutely, there will be no more noise created from the use of this other building. I promise you that.
All right, I, I think both the testimony here and the letter kind of answered my questions. Jeff, do you have other questions of John?
Are there any improvements that you're doing to the interiors of the building?
I, you know, what we did right now was when the dry cleaner left, we cleaned it up. We, we took out some of the counters, the duff that we didn't need, and we painted. But like I said before, I, I really do want to do the building. Eventually, we want to do the interior and exterior. But I don't want to get ahead of myself right now. It's such a seasonal business. I don't, I don't know how much more sales I will get, if any, by by the expansion or, or the, the use of that building to have more. So I'm going to, it's more of a wait-and-see attitude, but irregardless, even if I don't sell any more bikes, it's just going to make it more comfortable for us to work. So then I'll just have to decide at that point in time with my sister, you know, how much money do we want to put in the building? What do we want to do with it and that kind of thing? But eventually, you know, we definitely would like to facelift it and probably get it looking more like the other building and updating it.
Yeah, and you'll, I mean, anything that will require permit, and you'll have to be in contact with the fire marshal either, either way to make sure that the building complies.
Yes, 100%.
Okay, other questions from the board? Let's see, Jason, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay, Karen?
I'm here, Karen.
I'm all set, thank you.
And David?
I'm all set.
All right. Ken Gordon?
Yeah, just one area. So one of the findings, Mr. Cortez, that the board is required to make because your property is contingent to a residential district is that the intensity of your operations won't be incongruous with or inconvenient to the neighborhood right next to you. And so that's why we have been talking about the use up and down Center Drive, and thank you so much for that commitment. In the proposed conditions that staff has drawn up, however, the prohibition on test-driving motorcycles is a little broader than just Center Drive. It includes any town highway. So we really didn't want your, your text to go just one block down onto Southern Drive, for example.
No, yeah, yeah, I get that. Yeah, I understand.
Right, so, so you'll see in the proposed conditions that it covers town highways, basically our, our town roads. You know, that doesn't rule out 15 or, you know, county highways or any other state highways or interstate or whatever. But I just wanted you, let you know that and see if that's going to present any terrific obstacles for you.
No, absolutely not.
We also, one of the conditions is that the, the conditional use is going to be good for a year, and after that, just to, to make sure that everything is copacetic, and then next year you'd have to come in and, and just re-up the condition.
Why would we do that? I'm just asking.
We just want to make sure that there, the, there won't be any other noise or disturbance to neighbors, especially, we just want to make sure that it is, you are doing what you say you're going to be doing by reducing the noise and the impact on the neighbor.
Okay.
Goes back to that same finding that I was talking about, Mr. Cortez, about it not being incongruous with, with the residential district that's right near, right next to you.
Okay.
But Ken, could you just remind us all that the majority of conditional use permits are for one year?
Yeah.
Whether it's, whether it's John's property or project or a sidewalk cafe or something from a, from a restaurant, we do, they do come back a year later and make the, then they, as long as all the conditions have been complied with, then those, the conditional use permit is renewed and I think extended for a longer period of time after that, isn't it?
Um, I believe we do have a limit usually of a couple of years, but we don't go too much beyond that. You know, that's my recollection.
Okay.
But I, I defer to Jeff or, you know, if Jeff doesn't know Ramsey, who's in the background.
Yeah, no, normally, it's when we have concerns and we place conditions on the application. The part of the renewals for the planning board to evaluate, are you meeting the conditions that the planning board has placed on the application? In this case, they need to come back in one year. Often when we find that the, there's no complaints, no issues, they seem to be able to meet those conditions, the board can make a decision if they want to require another renewal or grant a conditional use permit. Once the board can, grants a conditional use permit, it is granted to the property until it becomes void after being vacant or not being under operation for a year.
So I stand corrected. So then, I guess, Mr. Cortez, the, the real answer is come back in a year to make sure everything's copacetic, as Jeff said, and then after that, if everything's good, then you're granted effectively a ongoing conditional use permit to continue your operations. If you abandon the use, obviously, the conditional use.
Right, right. What I?
And then the other thing is that it's important that is up to the planning board. They can renew you, they can, it is, it is a choice of the planning board.
Okay.
Mr. Cortez, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem. So would I go through the same exact process again, or do I just come to you in a year and, like, we go through the same type of thing where I go in front of the board like I'm doing now, or?
Yeah, Mr. Cortez, yeah, it would be another public hearing, another application in front of the planning board, similar to what you've done now. You can give an update about what's going on, how you're complying, communicate with the department.
I, I would anticipate, however, Mr. Cortez, that if everything is fine, it wouldn't be a two-meeting process. It would probably be a one.
Yeah, and I, I just didn't want you to think you were being picked on.
No, okay.
Or singled out. This is a very typical condition.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Jeff, you're all set?
All set.
All right. Board is all set. Is there any, anyone joining us tonight that cares to address this application?
Please range your hand in Zoom or.
All right.
Doesn't look like there's anybody.
Okay. All right, John, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need to do something here to get to my. All right, our next application is 3PO122. This is the application of 1925 South Clinton LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval for Phase 2 for 9,200 square foot retail and other associated site improvements as well as a conditional use permit allowing for retail building to house a 2,300 square foot Starbucks drive-through facility. All right. Do we have a representative, Mr. Paul?
I'm here. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
As, as Jeff read on the roll earlier, and you just mentioned, we're here tonight seeking preliminary overall and final Phase 2 site plan approval along with conditional use approval to operate a restaurant, a drive-through and extended hours. We were before the board in March, tabled at that time, pending the results of the Architecture Review Board meeting. We did appear before ARB, and the application was approved as presented at that meeting. And as Jeff mentioned, we did coordinate the building footprint with the approved footprint and elevations from the ARB meeting. So that's the minor change to the site plan. It didn't change any of the spatial relationships, just the articulation of the footprint itself. We've, we've been before the board. I've described the, the uses and, and how we're compliant with the previously approved preliminary overall. I think the board is familiar with the application and understanding you have a lengthy agenda. I won't, you know, go into any more detail, but, you know, open it up to questions for you all.
Thanks, Paul. Could I just ask Jeff to zoom in on the footprint of the building? Just get us a little closer to the building that's, that's going in.
Brendan is running the.
Brendan, thank you. Great, I knew that.
Been for a long time.
So Paul, in, in essence, just some of the articulation in the, the kind of the perimeter of your building is reflected, reflective of what the the ARB wanted to see.
That's right. We, we basically mirrored the west facade on the east facade. So the, the true front of the building is, is facing west into the parking lot. And given some of the previous concerns of ARB, they wanted us to have a appropriate street-facing facade. We mirrored that same facade onto the east side providing essentially storefront openings and awnings. They will be, they will serve as, as essentially back of house for, for the most part, but providing an elevation that they felt was appropriate and adding a little bit more visual interest on the, the north and south of the building as well on those easterly corners, as those are the predominant approaches that people will see traveling either northbound or southbound on South Clinton.
This wouldn't really necessitate any modifications to any of the engineering or any of the landscape improvements you're proposing.
No, everything was done basically curb-in.
Got it. All right. Paul, if you don't mind, we, we do know that there's been and I have read the, the conditions of approval. And just kind of go through for us, if you would, the you know, the connection to the property next door and some of the resolution to stockpiles that you currently have on site.
Sure, yeah, we, we provided a, a response letter to all the previous comments, both from town staff, previous planning board comments, town engineering, et cetera, dated March or April 6th, that, that those comments and responses were all incorporated into this revised plan set that was sent in. We will be making the connection to the Brookdale property to the south. I did have a conversation with the owner. After the last meeting we had, there, there was a representative who spoke before the board, I think you'll recall. I reached out to her and she put me in touch with the owner of, one of the owners of the facility. We had a good conversation. We agreed to have a onsite meeting prior to us actually physically making that connection. And I told them the timing of that would probably be somewhere in the May timeframe, so we're going to coordinate schedules and have that, that meeting with them. Additionally, we will be doing the finalizing the construction of the signal at the southerly access point to the. Signal at the southerly access point to the to the property, uh essentially creating the fourth leg of that intersection. Um, the the actual entrance off of South Clinton is already constructed. And we will be completing the uh the the phase two. Improvements as shown on the phased uh site work plan that's incorporated in this set. We had a conversation about the topsoil piles and the other stockpiles, we do intend to use the aggregate. To create the the road subbase. And the parking lot subbase for this phase, uh, we will be addressing the topsoil. Uh, that which is not needed for either final stabilization for this phase. Or a future phase uh will be removed from the site, we do have access there. Um, and we will be taking that off uh during this phase of construction. And you know, the only condition that I think, as I read through uh the staff report, was that. In addition to putting down aggregate subbase, we would put topsoil over the top of that. I I just, I wouldn't recommend that, I wouldn't want to do that, I that would be a, I would contaminate all of my subbase material and it's essentially. Um, it would be a waste, so we wouldn't do a combination of the two, we would um, we would not place that subbase and put topsoil over it. Uh, that's the only, you know, really comment I had to the staff report.
Okay. Does anyone else have? Other questions? I'm asking the board. Jason, do you have questions, Paul? You're good. Karen?
Thanks.
And David? David Fader, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was trying to find the mute button. No, I don't have any questions.
All right. Paul, I I think um. Were there comments of with or we had, I think we just wanted clarification on any. Outstanding sidewalks that need to be constructed? Are there still some segments of of sidewalk?
Yep, per per incentive zoning uh approvals, there was uh off-site sidewalks that needed to be constructed. We did uh construct the Elmo Dev sidewalks last last season. And we asked for a deferral of the sidewalks uh along South Clinton. Until um until this construction season, I believe the town board uh resolution allows us until June thirtieth. I'd love to have, you know, a a little more time, we certainly will construct them during this construction season and um but. You know, June thirtieth is the date that we are uh currently uh required to install them by. And that it is our intention to construct it, you know, once we mobilize during this season. Um, we anticipate mobilizing sometime in May. Pending, you know, approvals here and then uh working diligently, we do want to deliver the building to Starbucks uh. By November first for their uh for their interior tenant fit out, so. Yeah, we have uh, you know, our intentions of of moving forward and completing all of the onsite and offsite work that's required.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, how about a few questions, Paul?
Yeah, so with with the aggregate, what's your? It looks like you're covering most of the site in this this aggregate that you have on the property currently.
Yeah, we previously had an approval to to use that aggregate material that we harvested from the site. As a stabilization measure in lieu of the topsoil, so um the. The combination of the two effectively would be a colossal waste of money. Uh, because when I place the aggregate, I'm going to put Mirify down, which is the parking lot subbase. And then this the aggregate over it. If I put topsoil on top of that, I'm just going to wind up contaminating all that stone. And uh and basically rendering it useless, so we would uh, we would, we wouldn't do a combination of the two, it would be an either-or scenario.
Okay, I think part of the concern is that there would be a whole, the the site would be basically covered in in the aggregate and there wouldn't. For an unspecified amount of time um without like grass or any other stabilization on the the property.
Yeah, we understood that, Jeff, and we certainly want to move forward and and develop the rest of it if. If the board prefers to see a vegetative um stabilization, we could do that. And in lieu of placing the aggregate material, it's just when when we we got into developing fit the original uh. Construction with the overall mass earthwork, we wound up. Obviously, uh, dealing with some unknown conditions in the site and harvested out a whole bunch of shoprock that that was dumped in the site. And buried topsoil, hence why we've got a big pile of aggregate and a big pile of topsoil, but um trying to. Allow the conditions that we experienced to to be utilized rather than um be a be a huge, a huge detriment to the site, so. Um, we would, we would remove the topsoil we don't need during this phase. We'd place the aggregate we need for this phase. If it's preferred to see a vegetative buffer or vegetated stabilization, we would do that. And um we would stockpile uh any surplus aggregate in a manner. Um, similar to the remaining topsoil that we need for the future phases, but it would be done in a. A windrow fashion towards the west boundary of the site in a manner that's, you know, not going to be detrimental to the aesthetics of the overall development.
So there's a, there's a page CS one hundred that was submitted as part of showing the the easements for. The connection, the connection to the residence behind you, um, it just showed a bunch of things that weren't approved. As part of the incentive zoning and something that the the town, the planning board hasn't looked at before, and I just want to. Make sure that you're not seeking approval for that and it's not something that's been approved previously.
No, there was a request to show how the the parcel to the south. Could be incorporated, that was a, that was a request that that was part of the previous comments, so we simply showed. How we have uh developed the site. Or essentially how we foresee developing the site with that additional parcel to the south, which is. I think it's a nineteen sixty-nine uh South Clinton parcel. Um, we it used, it was the former church parcel, we demoed the church and uh we now own that property, so we just showed that. For reference to town staff as how we intend to develop that in the future.
You're like constructing the fifty-nine parking spaces right now, I think there was some consideration of. The of being additional parking over the aggregate, but do you think that the fifty-nine parking spaces will be enough for for the use of that building?
Yes, yeah, it's it's in excess of what's required uh as the blended ratio of five per thousand. And that's what, that's what we intend to pave, uh, that's correct, Jeff.
That plan uh for the south property, the old church is not on this plan, is it?
It's not.
It is not in the plan set, it was it was sent as a separate uh.
All right, so it's it's not a part of a request for the overall preliminary update.
It is not.
Okay. All right, uh, Ken Gordon, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Um, Paul, how are you today?
Good, hey, Ken.
Good, good. Um, so I think I heard you say that um. The developer is committed to completing the Clinton sidewalks by June thirtieth. Um, that would apply to all of the remaining sidewalks required by the incentive zoning.
Yeah, the Rudenville and and Lactaville, there's a couple little infill sections there.
There are little 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 strips in there, yeah, okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that. And then with respect to um my favorite subject, dirt piles. So, um, I was listening carefully to what you said. I think I heard you say that you're going to leave onsite, of course, the topsoil that is needed for this phase of the project. And I thought I also heard you say you're also going to leave onsite. Topsoil that might might be needed for future phases of the project, but anything else you're going to leave, uh, remove. I I don't know what that means, um, so I don't know what the town should expect to see. Removed if I understand that you leave the topsoil for this phase of the project. Um, I don't understand leaving topsoil for future phases of the project and some. I mean, do we still end up with a mountain of topsoil?
No, no, it would be, it would be spread so as to essentially blend in with the site and. That there there wouldn't be a big mountain of topsoil, you know, worst case, we'd have a a mound, you know, a couple of feet. And and towards the west boundary, we we push it back to to the end of the property.
And I think what staff has drawn up as proposed condition on this is to um. Uh, if the planning board is in agreement, uh, give you your approvals. Um, say, go ahead, start your work, but you're only going to get um foundation permits. Until the stockpiles are gone and the sidewalks are completed. Did you see that condition in the staff report?
I I did see that condition and, you know, ultimately. I think that it's just going to, who makes the determination that this that the topsoil is. Um, sufficiently gone such that I can have a building permit, right? Because I'm going to need some, the site's going to be under construction, I'm going to be bringing. You know, material in, there's going to be site work going on and out, so so an active construction site to me is an active construction site, I'd prefer. That we say prior to CLO that the topsoil is is addressed rather than prior to issuance of a of a. Of a building permit, just because at the end of the day, the site's going to be under construction, I don't think it's it's. We're splitting hairs at that point, that's that's the only comment I would have.
Um, last subject, I I just wanted to touch on one more thing, Bill, if I could. Um, and and I know I Jeff and Ramsey cringe when I go into being, you know, amateur planner man. Um, but um, here I go. So the turning radius coming out of the drive-through back out onto the entrance road. Looks like a pretty tight hairpin turn. Um, somebody's checked that, I assume, to see that that's, I just, you know, we don't want a a traffic. You know, in an impossible turn there.
Yeah, that no, you you can play planner any day, we actually, that that's a good comment, and Ramsey had previously brought that up. We we submitted with this uh application, a turning template that shows. Uh, that maneuver is is comfortable for uh the the vehicle we modeled, Ken, was a pickup truck with a with a trailer. Kind of like a landscape trailer figure, and that's, you know, kind of what you your worst case is going to drive through that drive-through. And they're able to make that right turn and stay in their lane without creating any type of uh conflict.
Okay, thanks, yeah, they don't, they don't share those turning templates with me, they don't dare, you know, so, because I wouldn't know what to do with, I wouldn't know which way to look at them.
You're already dangerous enough, we can't give you all the all the info.
I agree.
Thanks, Paul.
All right.
All right, everybody, uh, could I ask if you're not speaking to please mute your uh your computer or your phone? Thank you, um, Jeff, you're all set? Boards all set, all right. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that's attending tonight's meeting that cares to address this this application or ask any questions? Jeff, if you, Brendan, if you guys see anyone, let us know.
I've seen anybody on.
Couple more seconds, if anybody's cares to address this application. All right. Thank you. All right, we are going to go on to. Let me just put this down for one second. And go on to application three P O two twenty-two. This is the application of Bright Future Realty LLC and uh Jacob Ou Yeng. Sorry if I mispronounced that for conditional use permit approval to allow a sushi restaurant. Uh, on the property at twenty-four twenty-five West Henrietta Road. Is someone here this evening uh representing this application?
Hi, yes, uh, I'm here, uh, Jacob.
Good evening.
Good, how are you? So, um, yeah, we are uh putting a a uh sushi restaurant at twenty-four twenty-five West Harina Row.
Could we just have, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, could we just have a full name, Jacob, and your address?
Yes, uh, my name's Jacob Ou Yen, uh, O U Y A N G. And the address is twenty-four twenty-five West Harry Anna Row. Rochester, San Diego, one four six one, yeah, to be, and then we we are putting a sushi restaurant to the building. And it that building used to be uh friendies for years and tough uh takeover for. Like three, four years, so it's always been a restaurant and look, and they definitely in close for over years, that's why we need to. Another like uh zone for restaurant.
Okay, uh, Jacob, could you kind of walk us through your operation a little bit? Want to talk about hours of operation, number of employees.
Okay, uh, we're looking about eight to ten employees. Uh, and uh, I'll open hours eleven to ten, uh, Monday to. The Thursday and Friday, probably eleven, uh, ten to eleven. And we are putting a a new type of sushi restaurant, we do rotation, uh, like converter belt sushi. Uh, something new in Rochester and uh also Brighton. But we don't have any sushi restaurant in Brighton, so this could be the only one. Well, I know there's not, I think this is the first one, yeah. Uh, since I regard the closeout, yeah, then no, there's no sushi restaurant in Brighton.
Okay, um, so the hours of operation are. You know, eleven to ten and you've got.
Employees, yeah.
Um, yes, so beyond beyond that, um, how often do you get deliveries of of product?
Uh, we get a delivery product on at least, uh, so Monday to Friday, we could get delivery product every day. And weekends, um, we got seafood coming from New York City uh every Sunday. Uh, frozen seafoods and then the fresh, fresh seafoods are we coming. Uh, like all depend on the sales, all depend how how busy we get to, we could get, you know, delivery every day. Uh, so I also owns a uh tai chi, uh, we do sushi, so we have all this uh. Uh, connections for the seafoods.
And uh, how, it it appears you have seating, so you, are you? Uh, is primary part of your business uh for sit-down, how about the takeout portion, are you?
As right now, we're not looking to do uh any uh takeout, because it's like converter belt, like a buffet type. So it's all you can eat, so we pick customer pay uh one price and they got two hour to stay in the restaurant. And then, you know, the uh, they could watch the chef prepare of, you know, uh, food. In front of them, and then they go on the the converter belt and then keep rotating it, yeah. And they could, customer can order special uh order too, and we have another. Uh, it's new converter belt, this uh uh like a train on the top, uh, they could, you know, kind of like a tra- uh. Train track and then they could deliver um the food to the table that water they waters, they want a special items, yeah.
Okay. Um, are you proposing any changes to the site at all?
Yeah, the signage and uh we do interior renovation and then we're going to paint the uh the building outside. And we uh putting uh. Like new parking, um, you know, just not not, um, so in the back, we're just patching the parking lot. And the fun, we're going to be through the whole fun, yeah. Okay, the same 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 amount the parking space, we're not spending any, just I new.
Just repairing what's there.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Probably re re re-top it or seal it and then uh. Restrike, right, restrike the parking spaces. Right, re-stripping parking spaces?
Yes, yes, yes.
You, you think your current site lighting is adequate?
The, we're gonna S on lighting, uh, um. Outside the building, the LED lighting, uh, I also own next door, uh, yummy garden hot pot. Uh, we just, the same kind of lighting around the building, yeah, it's gonna light out the building a lot more.
Okay. And what about your, what about your garbage, uh, your refuse from the day? A dumpster?
Yeah, that's a dumpster, uh, they, they have a dumpster room, it's just in dumpster room, that, that's we, we, uh, use. Probably three times a week with waste management, yeah.
And I, this is sushi, so this is a silly question, your, your equipment inside is not gonna. Include fryers or anything that you need exhaust fans for?
Oh, yeah, with that, there is fire, we, 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 the sushi has a, a tempura. Yeah, so we had the fire, and then we, we also serve some, um, noodle stir fry. So, yeah, so we need, uh, so, what, we keep assisting the hood.
You work with what's, what's already there?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, alright. Alright, well, um, I'm gonna let, uh, other board members ask any questions that they've got.
Okay.
We have three more of us, so, uh, Jason, do you have any questions? You're good? Okay?
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Karen? You're, we can't hear you, Karen.
Did you hear me?
Now we can.
I, I, I guess I have one other question on the improvements to the parking lot, is that lot fenced? And is the fence, um, part of the parking lot improvements, if it's there?
Yes, yes.
So, are, are you replacing the fence, or are you just fixing it as?
We, we think, uh, we, we're fixing the, the fence and painting, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
David, do you have some, any questions?
No, I'll have to go check it out when it opens.
Okay.
Alright.
I see you.
Alright, uh, so Jeff, it's, it's your turn, you have questions for Jacob?
Yeah, is, is a dumpster currently screened?
A, a dumpster, I'm sorry?
Is a dumpster screen, like, is it in an enclosure?
Yeah, 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 yes, it is, yes, we, uh, they, we, we gotta fix it, it, it breaking, uh, it's kind of. Um, one of the hank is broken, so we need to repair it to some, yeah, we did do some repairing, yeah.
Are you, are you putting any new heating or cooling or generators or anything on the site?
Uh, we had to replace the existing heating and cooling. Yeah.
Will there be any delivery between midnight and six AM?
No, no.
Okay. And you'll be, you'll be restripping the, the, the parking lot as part of the repairs, doing correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Alright, so the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
And Ken, how about you?
Well, mine is not a question as much as it is a point of information for the applicant. Actually, there is another sushi restaurant in the town of Brighton at Sakura Home, which is in the town of Brighton.
So that's, okay. Oh, yeah, 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 that's in Brighton, yes. I does, Tesper, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have to remind a lot of people that that stretch of Monroe is, is in Brighton. Alright, so everybody set a chance to ask their questions? Um, alright, this is a public hearing, if there. Anyone who's attending tonight that cares to address this application, have any questions for the board?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Alright. Alright, Jacob will be deliberating on this, uh, a little later this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Our next application is four P zero one twenty-two. Application of ten fifty-seven East Henrietta Road LLC. And pure precision moving, less C, for a conditional use permit to allow a moving company. With ons, onsite furniture storage. For, uh, proper, on property located at ten fifty-seven East Henrietta Road. Is there anyone here tonight, uh, representing the applicant?
Please raise your hand or turn your video on.
Jeff, do you happen to see anybody?
I, I don't, Brendan, can you go to the first page just to see who we should be expecting?
Oh, Ken Bracker. Okay. He's the, he's the applicant, is there, uh, or a?
I, so, uh. So I did actually get a response, uh, in my email declining. From someone at Flum. Like the planning board meeting. You know, the outlook event.
I see.
For what that's worth.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll, uh, we'll move on to our next application, if anybody. Uh, well, actually, since we. We have kind of opened this, so I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that, uh. Wanted to speak or ask questions about. Uh, the application for ten fifty-seven East Henrietta Road, you're welcome to raise your hand and ask a question at this time.
Not seeing anybody, well.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll hold this until, I will circle back if. Jeff, you or Brendan remind me at the end, we'll see if anybody chooses to show up. Alright. That brings us to application, uh, four P O two dash twenty-two. Application of Royal Group R E M LLC. Jenny, Jenny's Bakery Less C for a conditional use permit. To allow for outdoor dining in conjunction with the existing bakery cafe. On property located at one twenty-five White Spruce Boulevard. I believe I saw. The name Jenny out there is, uh. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jenny, um, could you tell us a little bit about? Both your, your current operation and what you, uh, would like to do with the outside, uh, cafe seating?
So, I'm just wanna do the outdoor dining in the summer season. And. We will use the foldable, like, chair and the tables, so we will just operate that in our business hour.
And the, the business hours will be the same as your current hours?
Yeah.
And could you kindly remind us of what those hours are?
Yeah, we are open from Tuesday to Saturday from ten to six thirty PM.
Okay. And what, what time do you and your employees get to work? Do you get there earlier than ten?
Yeah, I get there around six AM. Then, yeah, and my employee, uh, get there around seven thirty.
And you're proposing, uh, three tables, is that, is that correct with, uh. Seating for two at each, at each table?
Right.
Okay, and those will be placed up, uh, pretty tight to the building? And are, are people buying the product and, and going outside to eat, or? Are you going out and taking their order and bringing it back out to them?
Uh, no, the customer will buy it and taking out to the outdoor.
And, and when they go outside, do they? Is your, is your product in a, in paper or plastic, and then, uh, they, they bring. Paper napkins and plastic forks or anything with them, we try to get an idea of what type of. Refuse would be left if they take and go outside.
Okay, so every, like, product, they package it in, uh, like, pro- plastic bag. Yeah, so they will take the. The plastic and the, like, disposable cups and utensils and napkins. But the garbage can, yeah, the garbage can is right next to the, the side door.
Okay, so you will have a, you will have an outdoor garbage can, that, is that already there?
Yeah, it's already there.
I see, okay. And the width of the sidewalk outside your store. Is that wide enough that when you have the seats? And the tables out there that people walking by can, can get by comfortably without, and stay on the sidewalk?
Yes, I think so.
So these are fairly small tables and just a small folding chair that you're gonna use?
Yeah, like, uh, patio, small table and chair.
Do you, do you intend to bring those inside at night, or do you leave them out?
Uh, we will put it inside.
Okay, so you just bring them in, and then put them out in the ne- the next morning?
Right.
Alright, and this doesn't really change any of your other operations as far as. Hours or number of employees or amount of product that you bring in?
Um, no.
Okay. Do you do a lot of the baking right on site?
Yeah, we, I mean, I bake every morning in the. House, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, like to open it up and see if there's others that have questions? I'll start with Karen, Karen, do you have any questions?
No additional questions.
Alright, thank you, David.
No, no questions.
Okay, and Jason?
I'm good.
Alright, Jeff, how about yourself?
Uh, I'm all set, you asked all the questions that I have.
Wow, okay, Ken Gordon?
Well, sorry, I got a question. So, um, the garbage, yeah, the garbage can that you show on this drawing. Is that a garbage can that you maintain or somebody else empties?
I mean, the building responsible for the garbage can.
So the landlord for the building is responsible for that garbage can?
Yeah.
And how often is that garbage can emptied?
Um. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, how large is that garbage can?
Uh, it's pretty big, like, um. I guess over thirty. Liter, I guess.
Have you ever witnessed that garbage can being overfilled or overflowing?
Uh, no.
Um.
I mean, I can request them to remove the garbage can oftenly.
Right, again, is, is, uh, Chairman Price indicated, um, one of our concerns is always what. Outside waste is gonna be produced, and there will be some from what you told us. Um, and we just wanna make sure that there, that receptacle, which is gonna be the only outdoor receptacle. Um, is adequate for your purposes and doesn't become overfilled or overflowing. So that your customers have no option but to toss their trash on the ground.
Yeah, I will make sure there will be no over, like. Throwing.
And can you, um, uh, maybe the, maybe staff already knows this, but I don't. Um, how wide is that walkway that is shown on this drawing?
Um, actually, I didn't measure that, but. Um. I think they can be stand like three, four people for the wide.
Do we know that, Jeff, how wide that sidewalk is?
I don't know, I don't know in particular, no, I, I kind of, I looked it up and, and saw how wide it was, but I don't know for sure.
It's just that the configuration of the tables and chairs at the top of the drawing. Seems to extend into the walkway, as opposed to along the building, and I'm just wondering if somebody's sitting in the chair. All the way at the top there, Brendan. Um, if, uh, if someone could actually get around that without stepping into the street, we don't want people to have to walk into the street.
That, that, that chair setup, is it the, is it the end of the walkway, the other side of it's like a vegetative area, so the walk isn't, can you pass there?
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions, thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Alright, uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that cares to address the application? Reminder, this is, uh. This is Jenny's Bakery. Anybody?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Alright, okay, Jenny, thank you.
Thank you, kindly.
We'll be, we'll be making a decision on this later, if you wish to stick around, or you can call. Uh, the planning office tomorrow for, uh, find out our decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Alright, that brings us to application four P O three twenty-two, the application of the University of Rochester. For final site plan approval, final EPOD permit approval, and final conditional use permit approval. Alright. Um, good evening, it's, uh, David, do I assume you're here?
I am here, good evening, board members, David Cox with, uh, Pastoral Associates. So, uh, it's been a, uh, it's been a long road, and we have been before this board a, uh, quite a few times and. Had many, many meetings with town staff, and we've really, we've gone back and forth with this project, and. When I, when I think back of where we started to where we are now, uh, that it's really been a good iteration. Um, a good progression of where we started to where we ended up, and I think that is a. A testament to the, you know, the public side and the private side working together, and public hearings and, and. Really to come out, um, where we are now, uh, so this last final application that we made was really just, uh. Down our eyes and crossing our Ts. Nothing substantially new, uh, from what we had talked about before, really just putting in the final application, the final SWF, final engineer's report. Uh, submitting the, uh, the le- letter of credit, uh, for review, so, um. Council comments are, were submitted, um, we addressed all those comments, uh, so we're really, really close, we're getting down here and, um. U of R is very excited and ready to get going on construction, they would like to start, um, as soon as. All the, all the plans are signed off, soon as we have building permits, but they are ready to go, so, um, very much looking forward to this. And it is, uh, it is weird to think, you know, this is the, the last time I'm gonna work with Ramsey Boehner. In the town of Brighton here, at the, at the planning board.
Alright.
Uh, it's been twenty years of my career, and it's been Ramsey and Brighton, so, uh, it's kind of weird, uh. Yeah. Um, but with that, um, I can take any, any questions anyone has.
I, I believe in our, in our, uh, pre-meeting discussion with staff and with our attorney. Sounds like we're really down to the, the final issues with. it sounds like we're really down to the the final issues with uh the meets and bounds description on the easement itself that the language has substantially been worked through. Uh I'll just ask Jeff and uh just confirm, but it does sound like, you know, the outstanding issues with regard to infrastructure, the water uh system that has been resolved and um and going back again to the easement, uh we those were the kind of issues we were we were pretty much down to. Jeff, you said correct?
There there's some few a few things that I think we're gonna be able to work out afterwards, and I know Everett had some questions, especially about the water service and we kind of have some questions with how it's connecting and going under West Henryetta Road and kind of how the approvals for that or if you're in the process of getting those approvals or you've talked to anybody from the the county for any of those.
Yeah, so we we have submitted to all the all the required agencies for that, West Henryetta. Um we've gone back and forth with the Water Authority, we're pretty close to uh being good with them. The Health Department is is pretty good. Uh it's really the DOT that we submitted to, that's the long lead item. Um and we have not heard back yet from the DOT, which is not unusual, they're pretty pretty slammed right now, but uh but we have submit submitted in to all the agencies.
Yeah, it's only some significant roadwork that's gonna be happening on West Henryetta.
I know that I didn't have any any other questions. We were kind of whittling away at these for a few months and I'm glad to hear there's progress on the easement side and appreciate everybody's diligence and working. Alright, uh other board members, uh anybody have any questions or comments uh as we try to wrap this one up? Jason, anything from you? You're good? You're good? Alright, thank you. David Fader? I guess he's good, okay. And Ken Gordon?
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay.
I have a few questions for him.
Please, yeah.
Are you are you gonna be replacing remedying the trees that you're moving one to one? Cause it seems like the last the last one, it looked like it was one oh two to one oh two, but the let this one showed like one hundred and four trees being removed, so I just wanted to make sure that you're gonna you're gonna make sure those are you're adding another couple of trees for that.
Yes, yep, one to one.
Okay, and uh when is the proposed remediation gonna take place?
With the trees or the or the wetland? Yeah, the wetland will uh take place during construction. When they have the earth move equipment uh on site, they'll be doing that at the same time.
Is that who's gonna be overseeing the the work there? For the wetland?
Oh, so the the our wetland biologist will be.
Okay. And what has anything changed from the last last approval to this one?
No.
Alright, and this uh to clarify something, we saw this, it seems the the one of the arrows is pointing to something that looks like a generator, and we kind of clarified this with you, but I just wanna make sure that the that there's kind of that loop of of utilities and we just wanna make sure that those are not generators.
That's correct. As we discussed, those are um electrical manhole but manhole vaults, so they're subsurface. Uh there's just one emergency generator.
Okay.
Alright, um thanks, Jeff. David, you're all set?
Yep.
Alright. Alright, uh this remains a public hearing. Is there anyone that cares to address this application? You know, if you see anybody, Jeff?
Not seen anybody online.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thanks, David. See, um at this point, uh applicant or new business application ten P N B one dash twenty-one has been postponed by the applicant. Uh that's the application of nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue Quickleys uh for subdivision and site plan approval. Um alright, so I think that's the last of our public hearings for the night.
Can we check to see if there's anybody from uh ten fifty's for three P four P O one twenty-two, see if there's anybody online now?
Uh four P O one twenty-two, has anybody joined us from ten fifty-seven East Henryetta Road?
Please turn your camera on or or have the raised hand feature and zoom. I'm not I'm not seeing anybody though.
Okay, we have one last uh item under under old business, that's uh application three P O four dash twenty-two, application of Daniele S P C L L C for a conditional use permit to approve.
Excuse me, uh Bill, there's a technical code.
I'm sorry?
There's a there's a code amendment. Proposed technical code amendments.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, I did see those. You know, let's um Ramsey, did you wanna talk through those?
Uh yeah, no, it's just uh what it is, they're technical code amendments and the purpose and intent of the amendments is to clarify the provisions of the code, correct titles of retired. That's a lot of what's going on there. Um and that there's other matters just needing corrections, modify the code in such places as to amend the code to be more consistent with our present practices and the need of the town government and the community to respond to specific requests to streamline or otherwise make more efficient the town government based on the observations of staff and members of the towns volunteer boards. So probably a summary.
Yeah, I I noticed those and uh noticed that the the titles of who was responsible for things was had changed and just some clarification points, uh everything seemed you know, very appropriate, you know?
Yeah, I like to I would like to refer to this bill as Ramsey's law.
Ramsey's amendment.
Mostly that's what we're doing is uh just changing titles because we're changing the titles in the Department of Public Works to match up with some new folks.
And if you wanna get rid of me, uh you really need to uh issue this um advisory report.
But the flip the flip side of that, the flip side of that, Bill, is Ramsey tells me even if we don't pass these amendments, he's still leaving.
Yeah, that is true. I did try.
I tried that. If the board has any questions, though, about any of the, you know, details uh of any of these amendments, I'm happy to answer them. Jeff and Ramsey as well.
Yep.
I I did look at these. Other board members have any questions or comments about these revisions? Okay. Alright, uh Ramsey, what would you like on this uh just the a motion to authorize the secretary to uh?
Uh send the letter to the town board, that's correct.
Alright, alright.
And I will do so tomorrow morning.
Okay, alright. Re- you're really trying to scrub your any evidence you're.
And you got that right. I still have a chance.
Alright, why don't we take that? We'll Ramsey, we'll we'll take that up in order with.
Yeah, thank you if you could. I appreciate that.
Alright, we'll uh let's circle back to three P O four twenty-two. The application of Daniele S P C L L C for conditional use uh permit approval to allow Jersey Mike's uh sub shop at twenty-seven fifty Monroe Avenue. Jeff or Ken, please remind me why we we tabled this last time?
Sure, um we uh we tabled this simply to give staff and give me an opportunity to write up an appropriate set of findings for the conditional use permit application. Uh and as we talked about at the beginning during staff report, uh we have created, there's actually, I believe, ten findings. I don't have them open in front of me. The ten findings that track along with the uh town code, um the section is two seventeen seven, which has eight, um essentially eight findings that are required and two seventeen five, which has an additional two findings for conditional uses which are adjacent to residential districts as is this one, um and all of the others for that matter on the agenda. So uh so you'll find in the staff report proposed ten findings um and they've been reviewed by staff and by me and again, happy to answer questions, um but they're pretty straightforward.
Okay, alright. Alright, but you are you are comfortable. You've had had an adequate time now to uh conditions together.
Yep, we we have, um you know, Ramsey and Jeff and uh I along with Rick DiStefano all worked on these, so we're we're all satisfied that we're well in full compliance with the code here.
Uh please remind me, did we close the public hearing on this and then table it?
Yes, we did. The public hearing's closed.
This is not.
This was simply for board discussion and um and the issuance of a decision.
Very good. Okay, um I'll just ask board members if anybody has any any concerns or other questions regarding the Jersey Mike application? Seeing some head shaking, alright. Alright, so why don't we at this point? How how's everybody doing? Is there a we does anybody need a break before we go back and start our resolutions?
How you doing, Holly?
I'm good. Keep going, thank you.
Alright, alright. Okay, why don't we um go back, Ken? Brendan, is there a chance that you can call up the uh the staff report on these applications? I I would with the new uh adoption of the of the findings for the conditional use, um I would like us to read those uh just so that we've we have those um reviewed before before making the determination.
Uh Jeff, do you wanna do that or tell me where they are, one of the two?
Uh yeah, I can I can do that.
Alright, we'll uh we'll be, let's go back um start back, you take your time, Jeff. I'll just say we're gonna go back to uh two P O one twenty-two, this is Cortez cycle sales, so this is a conditional use and would like to see uh those those actual conditions. Ken mentioned a a couple of the details. And of course, I've I've asked you to do something that I haven't the a prayer of being able to read, so. Let me see if I can enlarge that at all on my end.
I I think as we go through it, you don't need to read the whole the whole conditional use findings, just the just go over the number then like we usually do with the conditions on the application.
Okay, I I guess it's um I know there was one condition that I heard uh being placed on on uh one of the applicants that I I wasn't sure I agreed with, um it wasn't the Cortez one, but I just wanna make sure that the the board does agree with all of the conditions. So maybe what I'll do, Jeff, is just ask you and say, are they are they fairly typical for the you got John's conditions up now?
The the conditional use permit findings are basically the same for all the properties, just a little bit of language change for what the use is.
I see, okay.
Like a restaurant or for the storage, the other one.
Okay, okay, so in in the case of in the case of John uh Cortez, we're asking him not to just drive down the road and use another town road for uh for testing just used state and county roads.
Yep, and that's part of the application.
Okay, that's okay.
And and this is gonna take a little getting used to, Bill, but so what we have first, what we have first is findings for the conditional use. Those are strictly tracking the code language. And as Jeff indicated, modified slightly by the type of use. Is it a restaurant? Is it outdoor dining? Is it storage? Whatever it might be. Um and then we get into the application with conditions and those conditions are just like they always have been set forth in the staff report as conditions on the application, suggested conditions. And obviously, the board is free to modify those as it sees fit before adopting them.
Okay.
And of course, let's not also forget about at the very beginning of everything, we need to do our seeker process.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna be looking for a motion that uh addresses the the uh seeker, the findings and the conditions. Okay, alright, um.
I think I got one.
Alright, well, do you wanna start? Let's can we close the hearing or was? Yeah, we we need to close the hearing, I think.
Uh that's it's gonna be part of it.
Alright, go for it, David.
I move the public hearing be closed and that the planning board finds the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff and that the planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings outlined in the planning board report. And that the planning board approves application two P zero one twenty-two based on the testimony given, plan submitted and the twenty-one conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I was on mute when I was giving you kudos on that. Very eloquent, thank you. Alright. Motion by Fader, second by Babcock Steiner. Any further discussion? Alright, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman? Calling the roll.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Fader?
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Alright, thank you.
Ramsey warned me that they were changing and I should study them.
Very well. Alright, uh I'm gonna uh when Jeff has a moment, I'm just gonna ask you to scroll to our next uh application, which should be nineteen twenty-five South Clinton. Alright. Alright, this is uh lost track of the application number there, but nineteen twenty-five South Clinton LLC uh do we have a motion?
I have one for that one too.
Oh, good, okay.
I move the public, I move the public hearing be closed and the planning board finds the application is consistent with the previously approved negative declaration issued for this project on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, and no further environmental re- review is required. And that the planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings outlined in the planning board report. And the planning board approves application three P zero one twenty-two based on testimony given, plan submitted and with the forty conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. I would I would like to have just a brief discussion, um I don't know which of the conditions uh Paul was talking about, Jeff, with regard to uh stabilizing with uh the gravel that was with regard to stabilizing with the gravel that was created from the, from onsite material and then covering with topsoil.
Yep, that's number six.
That's number six. I, I personally agree with Paul on, on that, that placing topsoil over the stone would contaminate, ultimately contaminate both. And I think the stone is adequate for stabilizing under, under the SWIP conditions, believe that satisfies SWIP. But I am, I am open to them hydro seeding, just the, the subgrade if, if we don't want to see the stone out there. We ran into this a little bit as a temporary measure with the Whole Foods application and the, the period of time after the demolition of some of those existing buildings that were there. Personally, I don't, I don't see a, a huge difference, but I can, I can see where if, if, you know, members of the board think that this could be protracted, that the rest of the site is not built on for a while, that the gravel might not be the best solution for a year or a couple of years. But I just don't think putting down the stone and then topsoil is going, it's gonna just cost a lot of money to ultimately take that up and dispose of that. I'd rather, I'd rather not see trucks running up and down the road, bringing new stuff in and old stuff out. I don't know, David or Karen, if you guys feel strong one way or the other.
Um, I tend to agree with you, Bill, because I remember that it, it turned into a bigger issue at Whole Foods trying to force grass in there too soon on top of stone, so. I would say one or the other. Go with stone or do some seeding, but don't do the stone till later.
Yeah. Karen, any, any thoughts on that?
I, I think what you're saying makes sense and, and would agree with you.
Great.
Jason, you, you agree?
Yeah, I, I agree with you guys.
Alright, so really, Jeff, what that means is, I, I think, you know, you can, we could, we could write the, the condition that it is either placing the stone without topsoil over it or hydro seeding with a, a ground, you know, a cover crop that will, excuse me, will be, will cover the subgrade. And that any remaining stone that is left after placement for what's needed for phase, I guess this is phase two. After what they, they use for that, they could windrow or stockpile that on the western portion of the site until it's needed. And we would have to just see what that volume of material is so that we can keep the size of it down and windrowed and long, long windrows and not in, in tall piles.
Yeah, he, he said he would, anything left over would be kind of,
Yeah.
knocked down to like, like the rest of the site or as part of it.
Okay. So that, I guess that would be, you know, just rewording the, the condition that it wouldn't require the additional layer of topsoil that it would then be an either, either or, where it's the placement of the stone or seeding the subgrade.
Yep, I have a suggestion that I can read then if you guys, I guess, okay.
Thank you, please.
So the, it will be modified to, number six will be modified to all areas depicted on the landscaping sheet being stabilized with processed aggregate from the site shall be, shall, shall be covered as, as shown or receive a layer of topsoil, four inches of minimum and seeded.
I see, okay.
And I think, I think you need to strike this, the sentence stabilization with processed aggregate is only, is not adequate.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Alright, so there was a motion and a second. Are we okay with the amendment to condition number six?
I am.
I am.
I am.
Jason?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, moved and seconded as amended. Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that'll take us to, could you zoom in so I can, so I can see? Thank you, alright. Alright, three PO two twenty-two, this is Jacob Bo Yang and Bright Future Realty Group. This is for the sushi restaurant in the old Friendly's over on West Henry at a Road. David, you're on a roll. Can I, can I?
Yes, I, yes, I can do them. I, I just, I just want to mention one thing, though, that the secret is that you have to stick in the, the conditional use findings and make sure you just pick the correct negative deck. There's three variants now.
Okay.
But yes, I, I can continue to do them. Okay, I move the public hearing be closed and the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff. And that the planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings outlined in the planning board report. And that the planning board approves application three P O two twenty-two based on the testimony given, plans submitted and the eleven conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second.
I move, moved and seconded. Is there any, any further discussion? I don't have anything, so. Alright, Jeff, please call the roll.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Application is approved.
Kind of curious about trying that one. Alright. Brings us, thank you. Oh, okay, this one. Four PO one twenty dash twenty-two, application of ten fifty-seven East Henry at a Road. Even, I think this one will be pretty straightforward.
Well, I need help on this one. I'm assuming this one we're just gonna table?
Yes, yes.
Okay. For representation at the next planning board meeting? Okay. Alright. I move the planning board tables, application four P zero one twenty-two for, for representation at the next planning board meeting.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just as a matter of hyper technicality, a point of order, Bill?
Yes.
There is no discussion on a motion to table.
That is good to know, Ken. That's the first I've ever heard.
I'm here, I'm here for you, Bill.
Yeah, thanks, Robert Schrulls, Bill.
You know, I thought I had those down. I, you know, how many years have I been doing this? That's the first I've heard of that. Alright. Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
No discussion on table, okay. Yeah, why would you have? One more click, thank you. Application for PO two twenty-two, Loyal Group, Loyal Group REM LLC for Jenny's Bakery. This is for conditional use permit at one twenty-five White Spruce Boulevard.
I'll give this one a shot.
Please do.
Alright, let's see.
Yeah.
I move the public hearing for application four P zero two twenty-two be closed that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and the negative, the, the negative declaration prepared by towns that the planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings, finding the planning board report based on the application submitted and testimony presented. And that the application be approved at the application four P O two twenty-two be, be approved from the testimony given, plans submitted and the ten conditions outlined.
I'll second that.
Very, very nice, very nice, thank you.
I can retire now, too.
Hang on there, hang on there.
No, you can't.
I recommend it.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, Jeff, please call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Approved.
Another one I want to go visit. Alright. Alright, wow, here we are. Four PO three twenty-two, application to University of Rochester for final site plan approval, final EPOD permit approval and final conditional use permit approval. Sixty-one thousand square foot, three-story addition to the laboratory for laser energetics. Alright.
Jason, you should do this one because it's slightly different.
Who, who cares to give this one a try?
I'm just looking through. Alright. So I move that the public hearing be closed that the plan, that the planning board finds the, is consistent with the finding statement adopted by the planning board on March sixteenth, twenty-two. And that no further environmental review is required. The planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings outlined in the planning report, planning board report based on the application submitted and testimony presented. And that the application be at that application oh, four P O three twenty-two be approved based on plans submitted and with the thirty-nine condition.
I'll second that.
Jeff, did that cover the EPOD as well?
No, there, there is no EPOD mentioned. I didn't see it either.
It's mentioned in the summary.
What would we just, we would just have to add?
Yeah, add that into the motion.
Yeah.
So what am I, what do I need to add into this?
Final, final EPOD approval, and that's for the Woodlot, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then, yes, I'd like to add the final EPOD approval to, up to amend the, the motion to include the final.
And David, you're?
Yeah, and I, I second that.
Okay.
And I, I just have one minor request for an amendment on the seeker determination, rather than state that it is consistent with the finding statement, which is what Jason said. It should say that it's consistent with the prior negative declaration.
And that's the one that dates.
Is that true in general?
No, it, it depends on whether the program has gone through a prior full environmental review and whether, but you'll, you'll see it in the, you'll see it in the staff report. I mean, we'll give you that.
And I, I see where I missed the, I mixed up the two statements. There is a statement like that in the.
If you look at this staff report, it's that it's consistent with the previously approved negative declaration issued for this project on March sixteenth, twenty-two. If that would be okay with you, Jason and David?
It is okay, yes.
Yes, I'll second that, yeah. I told you this one had a trick.
Yeah. It was bound to, it was bound to trip us up. Alright. Alright, we have motion and second. We have a couple amendments. You want to go ahead and call the roll?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Okay. Gonna miss the U of R guys. But go get it built, alright. Okay, so, alright, well, we'll do this and then we'll, we'll make a motion on the, of letter for code amendments after this.
Yes.
Okay.
This one's closed. This public gang closed already.
Yep, okay. Alright. Karen, you have any stomach to try this one?
Hello?
Yeah.
Neither do I.
David, you're back on. Go ahead. Alright.
I, okay. I move the planning board finds that the application for conditional use permit approval to allow a restaurant is consistent with the finding statements adopted by the planning board on August fifteen, two thousand eighteen, and no further environmental requ is required. And that the planning board adopts the ten conditional use findings outlined in the planning board report. And that the planning board approves application three P O four twenty-two based on testimony given, plans submitted and the ten conditions outlined in the planning board report.
I'll second. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, Jeff, go ahead and call the roll.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Alright, so we, we just have to make a motion to ask the executive secretary of the board to advance the advisory report to the town board. I think that's all we actually have to say. So that's, that's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is that formal enough, Ken? Alright.
Sure.
Okay, I moved and seconded. Jeff, please call the roll.
Babcock Steiner.
Babcock Steiner.
Sorry, just. Hi.
All right. Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Right, we got, we got signs tonight, we have a half handful of those.
We do, yeah. First one sixteen thirty eight was administratively approved through their, their sign plan, so this one will be. Sixteen thirty nine, it was approved as presented in front of the architecture board last month.
Okay. All right, I'll move approval as. What is, as, as recommended by A R B, right, okay, thank you.
I'll second.
About kind of seconds.
Yeah. Can we just do an all in favor here? Or do you want to call the roll?
I think we can go all in favor.
Okay, hi.
I didn't think that was gonna fly, all right.
I, I believe, I believe the code requires a roll call for all planning board.
All right, okay, all right, there was too long a pause there, should have known. All right. Jeff, would you rather do these at one at a time or you want to do them all together?
One at a time, probably.
Okay, all right, then please call the roll on this.
Okay, Babcock Steiner. Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Approved. The next one is sixteen forty for EMP nails, those were presented. With the architecture report.
All right. I move to approve as recommended by the A R B.
Hold on a second.
Please call the roll, Jeff.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Approved, and then sixteen forty one was also approved administratively through our sign plan. That's, that's the last one.
All right. Very good. Well, all right, this is, this is the point where we say adios to Ramsey.
The last one.
Yes.
Congratulations and thank you for.
Thank you, thank you, guys, I'm gonna miss you all. Appreciate all you guys helped through the years, thirty two. Started here when I was twenty nine years old.
Wow.
You still have to come to these meetings.
Yeah, but you're, you're not gonna like me anymore than you like me now, that's for sure, if I'm in your. Picking on you, dude. I do want to thank everyone for the dedication. You guys work really hard, I don't think people know what you guys do for the community. Know the hard work and dedication that you guys do for us, and it's been greatly appreciated through all the years. All your support has just been wonderful, and I really do wish you guys the best. And I'm, thank you for the opportunity to serve as your executive secretary for all these years.
All right, well. You know.
I will, I'll be around, guys.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There's a, there's a message in the comments for you, too.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
Ramsey, you've done, you've done great work, you know that, and thankfully you've left all of us in a good position. I have tremendous confidence in the ability of this board to continue to do great work for the town because of. You know, the members of our board, the leadership of Bill, and. You know, frankly, the work that Jeff has shown that he can do and master, and I, I have great, great positive. Thoughts about how this board's gonna go forward. But of course, we'll miss you, Ramsey.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and you guys are in good hands, and I will miss you guys.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know when I. I don't know when I'm gonna see you again, Ramsey.
Uh, pretty quickly, I'm just behind Town Hall.
No, no, I mean, I mean, like, probably, maybe not tomorrow, maybe Friday.
Not tomorrow, we still have historical preservation to do and a few other.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, everyone, everyone, Milton, thanks for your kind thoughts and, and everything.
All right, folks, we'll stay tuned, we'll, we'll find out. Probably not too soon before the May meeting, whether that's gonna be virtual or we'll be back in Town Hall.
So my expectation is the governor will announce on May fifteenth, which is when this extension is through.
That's right, that's how it works.
All right, okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Everyone, take care.
Okay, for June.
June, okay.
No, Jason and Jim.
June.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thanks, thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Everyone, take.
Bye now.